To the February 13th, 2023 City Council meeting. We will, I guess we're called to order and we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance stated by Councilor Brooks. And so if we could all please stand.
All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. One nation, under our individual liberty and justice.
All right, for announcements, we have a new employee introduction and I think Chief Pickering's headed up far away.
Well, good evening, Council President Pratt and members of council and Mayor Boobinick in Zoomland somewhere. I am excited to be here tonight to introduce a new police officer and also to announce a promotion of Sergeant in the Police Department. First, let me introduce Officer Austin Goldstein. So Austin was hired on February 6th. Austin grew up in Sherwood and attended Western Oregon University. He's a graduate of Western Oregon with a degree in psychology. He will be attending the Oregon Police Academy starting in May with plans to graduate in September. Upon Austin's return, he'll be assigned to the Patrol Division when he graduates. And I just asked that you please welcome Austin to the city of Tuolton.
Welcome, Austin. I'm glad to have you. Look forward to you getting through the academy.
Thank you. All right. Next, I'm happy to introduce Sergeant Kevin Miller. Yes. So Sergeant Kevin Miller was promoted to the rank of Sergeant on February 6th as well. Both Austin and Sergeant Miller were officially sworn in today in a ceremony at the Police Department. Sergeant Miller has been with the Police Department since January of 2005, when he was hired as a Reserve Police Officer. He served in that capacity until May of 2006, when he was hired full time. Kevin has served as a patrol officer, a field training officer, a department driving instructor, and a department patrol bicycle instructor. Sergeant Miller started his training program today, which will take about a month before he will be assigned to a shift until our shift rotation in April when they'll go to night shift. So please join me in congratulating Sergeant Kevin Miller on his promotion. So that's, that's.
Congratulations and thanks for taking the night shift.
You'll do great.
Hey, next I think we have Jeriann to do the Ice Age Flood materials.
Good evening, Council President Pratt and councilors. Jeriann Thompson, Library Director. I apologize, I'm getting over a cold. I feel a lot better than I sound, I promise. But I'm here to give you guys a brief update about some cool activities that are happening in the library related to the Ice Age floods. So the city of Tuolton and the library specifically is a partner with the National Park Service to promote the Ice Age Flood's National Geologic Trail, which is a multi-state trail that does come through Tuolton. And recently, we were asked by the Park Service to pilot their program to do a Junior Ranger badge, like they have at many other national parks. So through this program, kids can visit a park site, do activities, and then earn a badge or a sticker recognizing them as a Junior Ranger. And so the Park Service created this booklet, Mega Flood Adventures. There is a two-page spread for Tuolton. And so youth in our community can come to the library, request a copy of the booklet. If they complete the local activities, they qualify for the Junior Ranger badge, which is an actual, an actual badge. It's very cool. We did get a very limited supply because it's a pilot program, but it's been very successful and we're asking for more copies of the booklet that we can distribute from the Park Service. In addition to the booklet, we also offer the Passport to Your National Parks stamp for people who have the National Park Service passport. So you can come to the library and get a stamp for the Ice Age Flood's trail as well. While I'm here, I also wanted to tell you that we recently created a new collection in the library, the Ice Age Collection. This collection is shelved directly below the mastodon that's on display at the front of the library. And it includes books for children, teens, and adults, DVDs, and local driving guides. So you can not only learn about the local impact of the Ice Age floods, but you can get a better context for the animals that lived during that time, as well as the conditions of that time. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. There's no age limit. So, yeah. Yeah, definitely. And you know, the cool thing about the book is that it does include pages for different areas. Some of the activities can be done without visiting the area. But you know, it's good encouragement to visit other sites along the trail as well. No, we didn't have to do that. That sounds a lot of fun.
I just want to thank you two for bringing this and I love this little pen. And I've also grew up in a way that we went to have a national park. So it's so exciting to have a site right here. And I know for the Ice Age Trail, we're the only place that's a stop, the city of Tuolton. It was exciting to do the, go to the ribbon cutting and see the video of the film that was made and all the work that's also been done by the Geological Society people. And I don't know all those specific names, but I'm sure that they're in that collection. And I'm just curious if anybody wants to see that film, is how do they do that?
Yeah, we've got a link available on our website. We also have flyers in the library that have a QR code that take you directly to that video, since we're considered the interim visitor center for Tuolton on that trail.
Great. And then my other question is, can we call you Ranger?
I tell you, I really, because we got such a limited copy, I've, there's so many people on staff who really want one of these and I'm in that list. But so far, I've been saying, no, we're, we're going to keep it for the public. So I'm hoping that we get more so that we can all join in on the fun.
Well, thank you so much, Jeriann. This is a great addition to the library and to our town. And I never realized how big this Ice Age Trail was until I was in Spokane and there was all this stuff about it. So it's pretty amazing we have this and this way to engage children. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we're up to the public comment section of our agenda. And this section is to allow anyone to address the council regarding the issue not on the agenda this evening. Or the, we asked that each speaker limit their time to three minutes. And is there anybody, Nicole, signed up?
I don't have any cards and I'm sure if anybody.
If you're on Zoom, could you do the raise hand feature if you would like to speak? All right. I guess we'll go, we're okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda will be enacted with one vote. Is there anyone that wishes to remove any item from the consent agenda for further discussion? If not, any comments or questions? Discussion? And can I ask for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read. Second.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. I don't know what I do. To read the. Oh, I have to actually read them. Okay, so I'm going to read the consent agenda that we were moving forward with. Consideration of approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of January 23rd, 2023. Consideration of approval of a change in liquor license application for a Zuki sushi bar. Consideration of approval of a change in liquor license application for Granny's Deli. Consideration of resolution number 5669-23, authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement for the execution, acquisition of real property located at 18615 Southwest Boones Ferry Road. Consideration of resolution number 5670-23, authorizing an amendment to an agreement with OTAC Inc. regarding the pavement maintenance program. Consideration of resolution number 5671-23, authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement with the Oregon Institute of Technology and appointing special purpose revenues in the city's general fund during the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget. And finally, consideration of resolution number 5672-23, increasing the construction contract authorization amount for the 2022 Neighborhood Traffic Safety Projects Phase One, part of the Tuolton Moving Forward Program. All right, now.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. So all in favor, please say aye. All right. And now we're on to special reports and we have Council Education Series Planning 101. I believe that's Kim.
Kim McMillan, Community Development Director. I'm here to introduce this next topic and Steve Koper, you know him as our Assistant Community Development Director and Planning Manager. And this is about Planning 101. So Steve's going to take you through a history of US planning, state planning, local planning, maybe touch on comp and development plan. That's just a little teaser for future updates with you. And Steve, take it away.
Thank you, Kim. Good evening, Council President Pratt, Council and Mayor out in Zoomland. Again, Steve Koper, Assistant Community Development Director. I'm pleased to bring you this, what is hopefully the beginning of an educational series on topics about planning, zoning, and land use. This part is entitled Planning 101. I truly hope you learned a little something from it. If you have any questions, I'd ask you, please hold them to the end just so we can flow through the topics and then I can always go back slides. As Kim mentioned, tonight's agenda includes a history of planning in the US. It includes an overview of the Oregon statewide and metro planning systems. We'll begin an introduction to Tuolton's planning system first by exploring how Tuolton has grown over the years. And then briefly introduce Tuolton's planning system, including its Comprehensive Plan and Development Code, with the goal of expanding upon those topics with a future presentation and discussion in the future. And then questions. So getting into our Wayback Machine and diving into a history of the US planning, starting with the US Constitution, you have it very far back. So the reason why this is important to go this far back is the US Constitution established certain rights in the United States that were non-existent previous to the establishment of the United States as a country. And so among those rights are property rights. That's the Fifth Amendment of the Constitution. Due process, which is the idea that people get their day in court and particularly ties in with property rights because you can't have your property taken from you without some kind of due process. And then important to cities is state rights, which is the Tenth Amendment. One thing that you'll note in the Constitution that's not mentioned actually is cities themselves. And so even though states have rights, cities don't explicitly in the Constitution. And so most cities in the United States get their power from what's called home rule. The remaining cities get their power through what's called Dillon's Rule. The only thing really to understand about that is that the home rule system, which we have here in Oregon and in all cities, as well as Tuolton, of course, being part of Oregon, is that it sets up an explicit system where states have certain rights and then cities are allowed to have through establishment of their own home rule charter, the rights that the state relinquishes to it. And so by way of example, in cities in Oregon, we must comply with the Oregon statewide planning system. But then the council gets to choose their council in form of government. You get to make rules like the idea committee and figure out how governance is solved at the micro level. So in the early US, population and city growth was limited by the Constitution and technology. And what I mean by that is by the Constitution, basically those property rights, the presumption of due process, making it hard to take away property from people without some kind of process, meant that governments were slow to regulate property and development in the early United States. Even after home rule, it took cities time to develop regulatory controls. And then because of technological limitations, early growth in the United States occurred in cities around ports and rail hubs. So when you think of New York City, that's a prime example of because this predates electricity. This is primarily steam power and machine power and horsepower, literal horsepower. You know, that's, that's the way that cities originally developed. However, that system of early growth around ports and rail hubs wasn't without problems. And so you have health and sanitation problems overcrowding, too much density, a lack of sewer systems. This, of course, predates the invention of antibiotics and vaccinations. And so planners and advocates of the time started to think about a world in which there was population growth outside of the cities and into the suburbs. And so the illustration on the right shows a tenement apartment arrangement from New York City from this earlier pre-regulatory time. It's actually said, I don't know how true this is or not, but the tenements were actually built so densely that New York has yet to achieve the same level of density even in the post skyscraper era. So that's how tightly people are packed in there. So you know, obviously, we had kind of the beginnings of potential for suburban growth with some of the downsides of the central cities. And so we had a couple of additional factors that created a real growth in suburban development. And that's the 1950s to 1960s baby boom. You had pent-up economic demand following World War II. And then the rise of the private auto ownership, all combined together to promote growth in the suburbs. And so the 1950s saw growth with really, at that point, no zoning or planning. And so you see on our right, there's a restaurant in California called In-N-Out. You may have heard of it before, maybe not. And as the US suburbanized in the 1950s, it became clear without planning or particular the use of the tool within the planning field called zoning, that limiting land uses to certain areas of the city that property owners could develop their property in any way they wanted. And so suburbs quickly became concerned with the lack of regulations that were beginning to allow undesirable forms of development, like large billboard signs or drive-through restaurants in residential areas. And so if you look at the illustration in the slide, you'll notice how close some of the residences are to this new form of development that you may or may not have heard of called In-N-Out. And so at this point, cities started to again grow concerned about this kind of what felt like runaway development at the time. And so a famous court case known as Euclid v. Ambler Realty established the rights of cities under the Constitution to practice what is now known as Euclidian zoning. And this is the idea that certain land uses, in the case of Euclid, and Ambler Realty was a real estate office, but that you could prohibit certain commercial uses within a residential area by zoning. And so of course, by and large, cities still practice some form of probably modified, but Euclidian zoning to this day. And so what came out of that case also is this idea of what's called police powers. And we're not necessarily referring to the police, police powers, but the ability of cities to regulate public health and safety. And so if you see ordinances that regulate zoning, you'll often see that there's some sort of whereas that relates to public health and safety often in the enabling language. And so of course, zoning was certainly important to protect public and health and safety, but it wasn't the only aspect of planning. And so taking the big picture view and planning in a comprehensive manner quickly became the next step in planning for cities. And so that would be planning where public roads, sewer, water lines, parks, and so forth are to be located. At the same time, as planning became more common in the US in the 1960s and 70s, a growing wave of environmental consciousness began to shape future trends in US planning. The famous book by Rachel Carlson called Silent Spring and the Rise of Conservation Groups like the Sierra Club popularized concerns over sprawl and the increase in emissions from the auto-centric suburban growth that was happening. It became clear that Euclidian zoning, including wide categories of land uses being limited in certain areas based on pre-existing residential settlement patterns, was a problem. Looking to the future, problems planning will have to solve include planning for climate change by promoting development patterns that both allow for new growth, yet reduce emissions and vehicle miles traveled. And so on the right hand of the slide, we have Tuolton's own Eddy Line Development, which is an example of mixed-use development, which is one way in which we can help achieve those goals. So leaving the US context and turning to the Oregon statewide planning system. In response to the growth of environmental consciousness that we saw nationwide around the same time period, the 1960s into 1970s, Oregon passed Senate Bill 100 in 1973. It was signed into law by then-Governor Tom McCall, shown on the image on the right-hand side of the slide. This enacted a statewide planning framework, one of the first in the country. In 1974, 14 planning goals were established, which has now grown to 16. The Land Conservation and Development Commission was created to develop rules to implement these new goals. And so notable priorities of the statewide planning program include prioritizing citizen input, but then also at the same time, making the land use system highly predictable so as to encourage both residential and economic development in urban areas. And then the backbone of the Oregon planning system is to concentrate growth within urban growth boundaries, which I'll talk about in a slide or two, while preserving natural resources, farming and forestry lands. And that's also kind of depicted in this image collage on the slide as well. Oregon statewide planning today, so we have again expanded to 16 planning goals. There are a number of administrative rules which provide additional guidance to cities and counties on how to implement the statewide planning goals. Adoption and updating the rules is managed by the Department of Land Conservation and Development. That's their professional planning staff. And then actual changes to the rules are made by the Land Conservation and Development Commission, which is a board of appointees. Those appointees are appointed by the governor. And then they rely on the professional advice of their department's staff in making changes to the rules. And so you saw that process play out, for example, with the climate-friendly and equitable communities where the Land Conservation and Development Commission passed the rules based on the advice, technical advice provided by their staff. On the right-hand side of the slide, specific to the Willamette Valley, you see here this idea of concentrating development kind of in the center-ish area of the slide and then preservation of forestry and mountainous areas as well as farmland. Again, central to the Oregon planning system. Turning to the metro planning system. So in 1982, and I do apologize, I've found different multiple dates for this and there's some technical things about how and why Metro was developed. So we'll say in the late 70s and early 80s, Metro came to be, just for the purposes of discussion. So it was created by voters and I think the most important element of this is that it was the first elective metropolitan council. And so there were other previous regional governments. In fact, Metro was founded on the Columbia Regional Area Government, or CRAG as it was known. And so that actually dated back to the 60s and 70s. So very new and novel form of government. In fact, today, it actually operates under its own home rule charter, much like the city. In 1994, Metro adopted its first 2040 growth plan for the region. And so the goal of this plan was to guide land use decisions, to encourage more efficient land use, provide centers on main streets and in transit corridors, promote resource protection, a multimodal transportation system, and diverse housing options. And so that all may kind of sound familiar to you. It's, you know, exactly the same conversation we're having now. There are certain facets of the growth plan that have changed since then, but that original impetus, I think, still soldiers on. And upon the creation of Metro, it assumed from the state the responsibility for managing what is known as the urban growth boundary for the Portland metropolitan region. And so the urban growth boundary, simply put, marks the separation between rural and urban land use and is required by state law to contain an adequate supply of buildable land to accommodate 20 years of expected growth. The map on the right-hand side is from, directly from the 1984-2040 growth plan. And I've tried to highlight Tuolton here in the red circle just to give some context. As you may, the eagle-eyed among you may be able to see the Basalt Creek area between Tuolton and Wilsonville is not within the UGB. It's not even really necessarily very well-fleshed out at this point as a study area for future urban consideration. That kind of gray hatched area that's closer to Wilsonville is the only such area at that time. And I think importantly, the green area outside the urban growth boundary is the part is, is within the three counties that make up the metro area, but is area that's outside of the urban growth boundary. And so of course, the goal is to protect that area and encourage development within the urban growth boundary and not expand it unless the 20-year supply of land justifies an expansion. And so on the next slide, you'll also see the current 2040 growth plan map and you'll see some differences. And so the current metro planning functions include making adjustments to the urban growth boundary, again, the 20-year supply of buildable land. And also, as part of the urban growth boundary specific for the metro area, it includes urban reserves and rural reserves. And so urban reserves, which are shown in the kind of brownish or tan tone, are areas that are outside of the urban growth boundary, but may become urban. They may be incorporated into the urban growth boundary within the next 50 years. And then rural reserves, which are shown next to the brown areas, kind of in white, I guess, are areas that are intended to stay rural for the next 50 years. And so just a couple of observations specific to Tuolton in regard to the map is that, as you can see, the Basalt Creek area, of course, is now within the urban growth boundary. The blue area of Tuolton is metro-designated industrial lands. And so that's significantly larger than it was in 1984. Stafford to the right of the circle, Stafford area is now an urban reserve. And then I think notably, the green area is still land that's outside of the urban growth boundary, but it's shrunk a lot since the 1984 plan. Moving on to other functions of Metro includes managing what's called the Urban Growth Management Functional Plan. That's mouthful. There's an acronym, which is not much better, so I'll try not to say it again. The important thing about it is that it's metro system of rules that apply to cities. We have to have our comp plan and development code consistent with those rules. It's basically a similar analog to the administrative rules that implement the Oregon statewide planning program. And then perhaps most importantly is the Regional Transportation System Plan, or RTP. And as you know from your work session earlier this evening, the Regional Transportation Plan is very important because it determines which transportation projects in the region are prioritized and thus able to be funded. Because it determines, um, which transportation projects in the region are prioritized and thus able to be funded and built. So, big function there. Tuolton's growth. Let's get local. Um, so Oregon was incorporated as a state in eighteen fifty-nine. Previously an area of sparse settlement near Portland, Tuolton was incorporated as a city in nineteen thirteen with a population of only about two hundred people. Tuolton's population remained relatively stable and low until the nineteen seventies. Um, growing from only still seven hundred and fifty in nineteen seventy to about seven thousand in nineteen eighty. Um, which of course coincides with the growth of the Portland Metropolitan Region generally. By nineteen ninety, Tuolton's population had grown to, uh, about twenty-two. Or excuse me, had nearly doubled to fifteen thousand and then grown to twenty-two thousand by twenty twenty, by twenty. By two thousand, excuse me, and then by twenty-ten had grown to twenty-six thousand or so, which is very close to our population today. I think the main takeaway from this is that Tuolton's population group, growth primarily occurred between nineteen ninety and twenty-ten. Um, and relatively little actual population growth, at least net population growth has occurred since then. And I think as you'll see, the relevance of this particular information is that the majority of Tuolton's planning happened in the nineteen eighties. Just prior to this growth spurt, um, and in many areas of significance has not been updated since. So, an introduction to Tuolton's planning system, and again, this is intended to, um, tee up. A deeper dive into this topic. And so if you have questions, I'll definitely take them at the end and we can incorporate them into the next presentation if I can't answer them succinctly tonight. Uh, so Tuolton's first comprehensive plan was adopted in nineteen eighty-two and accepted by the state in nineteen eighty-three. Tuolton's development code was developed and adopted at the same time roughly. Um, and although the statewide planning system was started in the mid nineteen seventies and did require at that time development of a comprehensive plan. And so you may wonder why, why, you know, if, why did it take so long? It's pretty typical for cities. It just took them time to actually do the work and get it adopted. And so for the most part, that was understood at the state level, that the requirements started in the mid-seventies. And it took till the late seventies, early eighties by most cities to actually accomplish it. And then in twenty-twenty, our comprehensive plan was given a visual refresh, which you see here on the right-hand side of the slide. And then a rather significantly updated housing element based on the work done as part of the Tuolton twenty forty project. And so we'll, we'll give a little bit of background about what is a comprehensive plan. And then on the next slide, what is a development code? Again, with the intention of just introducing these topics and then diving deeper later on in another session. So a comprehensive plan, kind of a real core level, I think. Expresses the council's interpretation of the public interest. It is a collection of documents, master plans, maps and graphic exhibits that support that interpretation build. Only I think that's what it is at its core. It does also have the, um. Kind of technical function of, uh, establishing goals and policies for land development. And it is how the city demonstrates compliance with the state and metro planning requirements. Think the final takeaway at this point is that it's a high-level policy document. Is carried out by the development code, so its goals and policies do not apply directly to land development. Um, and so just to again tee up the conversation for the future, on the right-hand side of the slide is an example. Of a goal and policy from our comprehensive plan. The general goal in this particular example is to encourage development and preservation of housing that is affordable across a variety of incomes. And then the more specific policy to achieve or implement the goal. Is to support development of a variety of different housing types in all residential districts. And as you'll see on the following slide, the development code then creates kind of a feedback loop. Where it implements the goal and policy and then it applies it directly to land development. And hopefully that'll make a little more sense once you see it. So what is a development code? Again, development code implements the comprehensive plans. It's the how of the goals and policies, which are higher level and aspirational. Um, it applies directly to land development, making changes to land. Um, a couple of notes there is it doesn't apply in the public rate of way. Um, and it doesn't apply to activities that are otherwise regulated by the city that are not land uses. And so like the municipal code would apply to non-land use. So for example, building code is found in the municipal code, not in the development code. And then municipal and public works construction codes apply in the right of ways. So the city has other regulatory tools that are cross-referenced in the development code, but not actually in them. The development code includes zoning, of course, which we learned is a very important tool as part of planning, where land uses are allowed. Um, as well as development standards, how buildings relate to the site and other properties. And so that could include setbacks, height, utilities, and then building design, just a few examples. And so specifically an example from the development code that ties back to our comp plan policy on the previous slide. Um, which showed the goal of supporting a variety of housing types. In Tuolton and the policy that suggested what types of housing specifically and in which zones. In that case, all residential zones should be built. And so in this case, we see that the development code, this is an example from the low-density residential zone in Tuolton. Allows, but not requires, um, development of a variety of different housing types. That meet that comprehensive plan goal and policy. And so next time, I'd like to come back and take a deeper dive into the development code, um, and comprehensive plan with you. And get into, um, a couple of additional examples of how the comprehensive plan and development code work. And how is our planning system different and similar to that of other nearby cities? And of course, anything else you'd like to learn about these documents or planning generally? And that concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time tonight. I hope you learned a little something.
Thank you, Steve. Do we go to council or do I ask for public? Is there anybody public that? That's a question. Connie, do you? All right, anybody on council?
A lot of questions so far, yes. Not applications thus far. Um, it's, in talking to my colleagues around the region, it's kind of varied. Um, I think that it depends. I think townhomes are probably the most, of most interest at this point. Is there a minimum lot size to have an ADU? Not specifically, no. I mean, there's other standards that would apply that would limit it. Um, you know, you have to have a primary dwelling, first of all, and then you would have lot coverages, which is the maximum amount of a lot, of the lot could be covered by structures. Um, and then you would have other such provisions, you know, there'd be other things like the building code, for example. If you're going to have a separate structure, there's a building separation requirement to meet fire codes. Um, if you're going to have it inside the dwelling, you'd have to have appropriate, um, building codes there as well. So not explicitly, but I would say that like generally speaking, if you had. A lot that went below the minimum lot size for most lots, which is say sixty-five hundred on a low-density lot. Um, it would be hard to construct one. The setbacks, yep, that's another one.
But did we create a more extensive plan that was provided for us in the state?
We, we did apply for, received a grant from the state and we hired a consultant to develop a semi-custom plan for Tuolton, yes. Um, it, it, I don't, I wouldn't say that it varied greatly from, uh, the state's model code. Is what it was called, but I think the most important thing that we found was that we did extensive public engagement and public feedback. And then incorporated the, um, priorities of our planning commission and council into the final output.
Anything else? I have one, it's kind of. A little off of this, but, um, you mentioned home rule. And I know you covered it fine for this presentation, but I'm wondering if you had. Um, just a more in-depth description of that, that we could just be emailed or something, just because that is, um. Going to come up with other issues in the future. And I know Mayor Bubinik, that's one of his favorite terms to use, so it'd be good for all of us to be educated.
Absolutely.
Oh, great. Thank you.
No problem at all.
All right. Well, thank you for the presentation. That was very informative.
You're welcome.
So, um, we're down to, um, any council communication? Council Brooks.
First, I want to just acknowledge that it's Black History Month and to say that. And, um. I know for myself, I try to do some extra learning and hope that people are inspired as well to join me. We also during the, um. Other council communications, I forgot to mention that I was also at the League of Oregon Cities Capitol Day. And had appointments, um, and met with Representative Walters. And our new Senate Majority Leader. President Wagner. And, um, had really productive meetings. And just an FYI, when they did the training for us with the League of Oregon Cities, they narrowed down all those. Um, agenda items to three main focus points. Infrastructure comes to mind and there were two others, um. To try to be more effective and stay focused. So I thought that was interesting. Um, and I also saw Megan was there, so we were the two from Tuolton and it was nice to see you there. Thank you.
Yeah, or Mayor Bubinik.
Thank you. Uh, so just circling back on the email that I sent to all of you about, um, the LLC's ask. About supporting HB thirty-two oh-one, which is the broadband, uh, funding to bring Oregon's. Rules in terms of broadband in, in alignment with the federal, uh, rules, so that we can get better financing. Of our broadband initiatives here in Oregon. Uh, one of the things they're asking for is just to have our city logo on their letter that they're going to submit to the legislature. So I just wanted to make sure I didn't want to make a unilateral decision on this. That the council was okay, I'm assuming, with, uh, expanding broadband ac- broadband access to the rest of the state. And making sure we can get all the dollars we're entitled to, uh, from the feds to make sure that, uh. Folks enroll and not so rural places, so places like Beaverton, we still do not have decent internet access. That we can, uh, help LLC get that message to the legislature and make those changes that are needed. So I'm just looking for, uh, just head nods or thumbs up that we can add our logo to the letter.
Council Brooks has a question.
I just had the question of, um, is, are there regulations that really stick out? That is, I, I always was curious what prevents us. Um, before I vote or say what I think, I don't really know if there's anything that. Um, what the barriers are. That when people ask. I don't have this anymore.
Yep, their Oregon's broadband laws are in, uh. Parallel with the feds, it hasn't kept up. Um, as you know, there's been criticism of Oregon's broadband, um, department, if you will, under the Oregon business. Um, so they're trying to get this alignment in. And part of it is for refinancing of, or financing of projects. That right now aren't included in Oregon's, uh, plan, but we want to get it as part of Oregon's plan and get the financing available from the feds. And make sure we check all the boxes for requirements that, uh, the federal mud dollars have with, uh, when you receive them.
Okay. Okay, well. Are you thumbs up?
Sure.
Okay. The unanimous. So do you, will you follow up on that or do we need to follow up on that, Mayor?
I'll just ask Charlotte, I think Nicole just has to send her a logo to LLC.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Right, and my last thing I want to say, because I see someone in the audience I, um, used to serve on T-Park with. And, um, I just want to call out how volunteering and speaking up can make such difference. Because this person, when I first got on T-Park, said, "We need a new parks master plan." And over and over and over to the point where we came in front of council. And that's the only thing that was on our agenda for the year was a master plan and that's led to our Parks Fund and everything else. So thank you, Connie. And with that, um, do I hear a motion to adjourn? So moved. Second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Have a nice evening.